Thank you. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harry Collins. Right turn, march. Over, march.
Thank you. Please join me in the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for these outstanding young people that have joined us this morning. Lord, that just really demonstrates to us that we have such a bright future for this great country. Each and every one of these kids that are here this morning participating and being recognized for various things are doing this not because it's part of their required curriculum with the school district, but because they're going above and beyond what's asked of them to show leadership. Lord, we pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning and hope that you'll have your hand in each and every conversation, dear Lord. As always, I am so thankful for members of our armed forces and our first responders. I'm particularly thankful of those that are helping in the efforts up in the Florida Panhandle, also to include people like medical professionals and linemen and everyone that's there seeing to it that some degree of normalcy is returned just as quickly as possible. Lord, I am so thankful for all of these things and ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. That was a wonderful presentation. And we do have several proclamations and we're going to start with Commissioner White with his important proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I was approached about bringing forth a proclamation declaring this month is JROTC month. And I thought, what a great idea. We have so many outstanding young cadets here that are really pillars of their schools and their communities. Of course, I have a personal bias here. I have a daughter that's recently become part of the Army ROTC program at Auburn University. And boy, I'm sure thankful for the outstanding leadership skills that you guys gain in the program and just thankful for everything that I know each and every one of you will do as leaders in our community. So at this time, I think we're going to have the cadets join me for the reading of the proclamation. And while they're coming up, I would just like to read the names of each and every one that's in attendance today. I think that's incredibly important. With the Newsome High School Army JROTC, we have Command Sergeant Major, retired Anthony Marrero, Cadet Jamie Vaughn, Cadet Chorona Warren, Cadet Susanna Hollenback, Cadet Marianna Ramirez. With the Steinbrenner Army JROTC, we have Chief War Officer Four, retired Kenneth Angasser, I hope I said that right, Cadet Valeria Carasquio, Cadet Sean Worms, Cadet Neuron Williams. With the Armwood Army JROTC program, we have Retired Colonel Richard Swoop, Dr. Joseph Costelli, the principal of the school, Cadet Jasmine Gonzalez, Cadet Josine Caraballo, Cadet Zoe Antoinette, and Cadet Lamar Bryant. With the Tampa Bay Tech Navy JROTC, we have Retired Commander Keith Grimes, Cadet Jayden Martinez. With the Durant Air Force JROTC, we have Retired Lieutenant Colonel Anthony Hingle. We have Cadet Emmanuel Morales, who I want to note was one of the Cadet of the Year finalists last year. And he's currently a student at HCC. We have Cadet Jackson Smith, Cadet Austin McAlpine with that program. With the Sickles High School Air Force JROTC, we have Retired Lieutenant Colonel Robert Morasco, April Fix. We have Cadet Brendan Fix, who I will note was one of the Cadet of the Year finalists last year as well. And he is currently attending USF and enrolled in the Air Force ROTC at USF. We have Cadet Ally Benyon from that program as well. With the Bloomingdale High School Air Force JROTC, we have Chief Master Sergeant, Retired Louis Singleton, and Cadet Nicholas Auburn. And I'm also thankful for the school district staff that's joined us this morning. Michael Ramsey, General Director of Career and Technical and Adult Education, Chris Jargo, Director of Career and Technical Education, Retired Colonel Samuel Taylor, thank you so much for everything this morning, and Jan Wheeler, our Army JROTC Military Property Specialist. So without further ado, I would like to read this proclamation into the record. I think the plan is to start with a group photo. And Commissioners, I'm going to ask you to bear with me because each school has asked for an individual school photo as well and certainly think that they are more than worthy of having us accommodate that. So we have this proclamation that reads, "Whereas, established by Congress in 1916, the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps is sponsored by the United States Armed Forces and based in schools across the nation and on U.S. military bases around the world. And whereas, commonly referred to as JROTC, the program represents the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine Corps. And whereas, with a mission of motivating young people to be better citizens, the program prepares cadets to lead positive, productive, and rewarding lives by teaching personal responsibility, enhancing leadership skills, and enabling them to learn the value of teamwork. And whereas, every year, more than 5,000 students in Hillsborough County Public Schools participate in JROTC programs offered in 27 high schools throughout the county. And whereas, these programs receive strong support from the Hillsborough County School District, elected officials, and civic, business, and military organizations, encouragement that is essential for their continued success. And whereas, the top 10 cadets in Hillsborough County JROTC are identified each year through a comprehensive process that requires an essay entitled, "How JROTC is Preparing Me to Achieve My Goals in Life", letters of recommendation, and a selection board, and one is honored as the Hillsborough County Cadet of the Year. And whereas, Hillsborough County salutes the JROTC programs of Armwood High School, Bloomingdale High School, Chamberlain High School, Durant High School, Gaither High School, Latto High School, Newsome High School, Sickles High School, Steinbrenner High School, and Tampa Bay Technical High School, all of which achieved a top 10 cadet in the 2017-2018 school year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 2018 as JROTC Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents to support the JROTC programs in Hillsborough County as they continue developing future leaders and shaping productive lives." Cadets, it's dated today, the 17th of October, signed by all seven of the Commissioners. It is such an honor and a privilege for me to present this to you. As you well know, we have copies for each and every one of you. And Colonel Taylor, I've lost track of you. I'd like to have you say a few words at this time.
I'd just like to thank Commissioner White for carrying this out, for being an advocate, for making this happen.
And I certainly want to thank all the members of the county board for not only this honor but for giving us this time because I know there are many things that are on your agenda that you need to take care of. And we're going to orchestrate this picture-taking in a rapid fashion so you can get to what you need to do.
These are special young people. JROTC is a special program. These young people are developing their leadership skills, they're developing their discipline, they're developing their character, and they're developing their patriotism. And the programs are run by the students. So they have a lot of responsibilities that enhance their ability to get things done, to critically think, and to be the leaders that we need in our society going forward. But thank you so much for this distinctive honor.
Commissioner White, we do have a Commissioner that would like to make some comments. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to each and every one of you. I am so happy to see you and your role as a junior ROTC members and those that are in military uniform that have served. I had the fortunate opportunity to serve in the Air Force during the Vietnam era, before a lot of you were even born, even you were born. But back in that time, wearing a uniform was not really thought good upon at that particular point in time. Vietnam was not a good war and sometimes we were called dirty names. But I'm glad that it's all changed and this country respects you and thank you even as junior ROTC members. And I know some of you probably go on to serve in the military. So take it with pride, learn all you possibly can, represent this country well. We know that you would do that and we respect each and every one of you and God bless you.
Those are great words. Thank you.
Colonel, what I'd like to do is a group picture with these cadets and then I'll turn it over to you for these individual photos. All right, let's just step back, guys, and then we'll take some cues from the invitations.
All right, what I'd like you to do is everybody exit to this direction with the exception of the two top 10 cadets of last year. I'd like you to take a picture with them. These are two individuals who distinguished themselves. We have a Cadet of the Year program where all 27 high schools elect their best cadets. And their best cadets go into a competition that includes their academic transcripts, their AP classes, their letter of recommendation, essay, and before a panel of people, they have to answer questions. And these two distinguished themselves last year, both are now college students. Let me have Steinbrenner next. Exit left, please. Yes, Gaither. Have Steinbrenner from Armwood. They'll be followed by Newsome.
I have to say, I'm glad to see all these women in here. Really happy about that.
Durant. You'll be pleased to know that three of the last four Cadets of the Year in Hillsborough County were female.
Yay!
Bloomingdale.
Yeah, it's just on decon just then. It sounds worse.
Tampa Bay Tech. And Sickles with Ms. April Fix, please. Colonel Swoop. Was Mrs. Costelli in the picture with you? Want me to relieve you of that, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations to everyone. That is certainly remarkable accomplishment. And now Commissioner Miller will do his proclamation.
Good morning again. I know the Commissioners have heard me say this, but to those of you who haven't heard me say this, there is an organization that's called the Divine Nine. And Divine Nine is the predominantly African-American fraternity sororities, college fraternity sororities that have created many, many millions ago and have representation across the world. I'm a member of Cap Alpha Psi in that organization. This morning, we have one of our fellow fraternities of the Divine Nine here with us, and that is Gamma Zeta Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity. So I'm going to ask David Prater, the President of that fraternity, and all the brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha, please come forward. I'm not used to being around this many Alphas. Today, we're recognizing the Gamma Zeta Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha for all of the hard work they do in this community and for all the members do across the world. All fraternity sororities have our mission. Most of the missions are just about the same, and that is helping the community to make it a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. So this morning, we're going to recognize Alpha Phi Alpha. The proclamation reads, "Whereas, recognizing the need for a strong bond of brotherhood among African-American descendants of the United States, Alpha Phi Alpha, the first intercollegiate Greek letter fraternity established for African-American men, was founded on December 4th, 1906, at Cornell University in Idoka, New York. And whereas, the Florida Federation of Alpha Chapters was formed in 1950 to help coordinate Alpha Phi Alpha leadership throughout Florida. And whereas, Alpha Phi Alpha has expanded to nearly 700 active chapters throughout the world, including three colleges and one alumni chapter in Hillsborough County. Whereas chartered in 1945, the Gamma Zeta Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha and its nonprofit arm, the GLZ Educational Foundation, worked relentlessly to ensure Hillsborough County young people are educated and mentored to achieve personal, academic, and professional success. And whereas, the GZL Education Foundation is committed to providing education and training services that enhance charitable education and economic efforts that improve the quality of life for Feridians. And whereas, the Florida Foundation of the Alpha Chapters will host a district conference in Tampa on October 19th to October 21st where members will promote educational academic excellence and explore educational, economic, and social issues that affect their communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, hereby declare October 17th, 2018, as Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity date. And Hillsborough County recognizes the good works of the Florida Federation of Alpha Chapters of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the Gamma Zeta Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and the GZL Education Foundation, executed the 17th day of October, signed by the seven county commissioners." Mr. President, where are you? Okay. You want to say a few words?
Brother Oliver, we're the West Area Director.
Okay.
Good morning. On behalf of the Florida Federation of Alpha Chapters, I represent the West Area, which consists of from St. Leo College all the way down to Sarasota, Florida. My name is Gary Oliver. I'm the West Area Director and I represent our district director, Brother Marlon Ivy. We're coming to the Hillsborough County this weekend with over 400 Alpha Men from across the state of Florida for our district conference. And we're going to be working about promoting education, civic duty, and other civic responsibility for Alpha Men. And so this weekend, we are expected to not only have educational opportunity for the members of the organization, both alumni and college chapters, but also doing the work of Alpha for our national program. So we're honored, Brother Miller, to be here this morning and represent the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity. Thank you.
I would just like to thank the Commissioners, Commissioner Miller, for presenting this proclamation to Alpha Phi Alpha. As a chapter president, I can share that Alpha has a long history and reputation within Hillsborough County. Hillsborough County has been great supporters of us. We support Head Start as one of our programs. So there's been a great relationship with the county. So I'd like, again, to thank on behalf of the Gamma Zeta Lambda Chapter as well as Gamma Zeta Lambda Chapter Educational Foundation, Hillsborough County, for this proclamation. Thank you.
I'll present the next proclamation. I have water in case my voice gives out. It's allergy season, if you all didn't know. This is really always an important proclamation that we do every year because Manufacturing Day is something, it's all about jobs. And I remember why it first came on this commission. That is what we strove to do, was create jobs because we were in the middle of the recession. But I think that we have done so much, our Hillsborough County government partnering with the school district and Hillsborough Community College, so many private partners out there to really make it a resounding success. Manufacturing is a very important part of our economy. If you listen to any site selector, they'll tell you manufacturing is looking to relocate on a continuing basis. But this board has been a champion of local manufacturers. And I do want to give a lot of that credit because he started it, was Commissioner Al Higginbotham. Thank you, Commissioner Higginbotham, for all the work you did. And created the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County to develop a platform to create the skilled workforce that our manufacturers need and generate excitement around careers in manufacturing. I'd like to welcome all the representatives of the manufacturing industry and our training partners that are here today. We have Sharon Swetman from Southern Manufacturing Technologies. And Sharon, you must be Roy's daughter? Shannon. James Moore from Cardio Command, come on up. You can stand behind me. Christina Davenport from the Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Jerry Couston, I don't see Jerry, Florida Sun Coast Manufacturing Association, Mike Ramsey, Chris Jargo, Libby Simpson, Hillsborough School District, Dr. Alex Anzalone from Hillsborough Community College. We have Steve Moore from Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation, Daniele Oroso Cole from FLATE, Elizabeth Vock from Think Creative, and of course, Ken Jones. Ken is from our Economic Development Department and does such a great job for us. And I do want to thank you all for helping us to create jobs in our community, investing in our economy, and dedicating your time to the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County. And I'm going to read this proclamation and hopefully I can get through the whole thing. It says, "Whereas, manufacturing is a cornerstone of the economy in the United States and Florida. Recognizing October as Florida Manufacturing Month and October 5th, 2018, as National Manufacturing Day, highlights the importance of manufacturing and draws attention to the many rewarding, high-skill manufacturing jobs. Whereas, these occasions show support for and celebrate Florida's manufacturers and school programs that prepare the manufacturing workforce for the future. Organizations that strongly support manufacturing and manufacturing careers include the Association for Operations Management, Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Florida Sun Coast Manufacturers Association, Florida Advanced Technological Education Center of Excellence, that's called FLATE, Florida Defense Contractors Association, Hillsborough Community College, Hillsborough County Public Schools Career and Technical Education, National Tooling and Machining Association, Society of Manufacturing Engineers, University of South Florida College of Engineering, and the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County. Whereas, Manufacturing Day student tours are conducted to strengthen the technical and academic skills of young adults enrolled in manufacturing, engineering, and design courses of study. Whereas, manufacturing provides jobs for approximately 50,000 Hillsborough County residents. And manufacturing facilities in the county make products as diverse as components used in the home building, aircraft, aerospace, defense, and medical industries. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 5th, 2018, as Florida Manufacturing Day in Hillsborough County and October as Florida Manufacturing Month and urges all residents to recognize the importance of manufacturers and their important role in the county, the state, and the national economy." Of course, it's signed by all seven. I'll give it to Shannon.
There you are. Hi. Would you like to say a few words?
You know, we know your dad real well, Roy Swetman, and he's always been such a leader in the Manufacturing Alliance in the group. So please tell him we thank him for all of his contributions.
Thank you, Commissioner Murman. Thank you to all the other Commissioners. We really appreciate this proclamation and all of the support that you provide to us. It's so important for raising awareness in our community. Not enough people understand that there are really great jobs and careers in manufacturing throughout the community, all of the Tampa Bay area, especially in Hillsborough County. There are a lot of jobs that don't require college degrees. A lot of companies have on-the-job training programs and apprenticeship programs available. And we really utilize the month of October to try and raise awareness throughout the community. And we really appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Well, as I said earlier this morning, coincidentally happens to be a celebration of our young people here in Hillsborough County. We had the big JROTC Month proclamation. I included Durant's band for that. And it just so happens to be time for the county fair. So at this time, I would like to invite Tom Umaker, the fair manager, to join me, Kelly Messick, the Harvest Queen Coordinator, Christina Wellen, the 2018 Senior Harvest Queen, and Bridget McLaughlin, the 2018 Junior Harvest Queen. Welcome. Welcome. Yep. Yeah. Tom, how you doing? Good, good. So I had a little personal anecdote with that JROTC proclamation, and I have one here as well. I'd mentioned that my oldest daughter is participating in Army ROTC up at Auburn. My younger daughter has gotten involved in the pageant scene. And I can tell you firsthand, in being the dad of a young lady that participates in these pageants, that although Christina and Bridget are certainly lovely young ladies, it takes much, much more than beauty to win these pageants. These young ladies that win these pageants are outstanding leaders, and they are just great people on the inside and out. You know, these fairs are really all about showcasing our agricultural industry, the hard work that our ag students and programs like FFA and 4H put into their projects, highlighting our rich agricultural heritage here in Hillsborough County. You know, we have people moving here each and every day in droves that are oftentimes just not aware of what a rich agricultural heritage that we have here in this county. So I'm thankful to Tom and the members of his board and everything that they've done out there with the Hillsborough County Fair. That fair has just moved along leaps and bounds through the years. If you've watched it from the beginning like I have, it's just incredible what they've done out there. So I'd like to go ahead and read this proclamation for the Hillsborough County Fair. It reads, "Whereas fairs are an American tradition that bring neighbors together and strengthen the social fabric of communities. And whereas Hillsborough County has a rich history of excellence in agriculture, education, and industry. And whereas the Hillsborough County Fair showcases this heritage while providing entertainment, education, and competition in a fun, family-friendly setting. And whereas the fair's 2018 theme, Good Times and Country Rhymes, celebrates Hillsborough County's deep rural and agrarian roots. And whereas the fair includes traditional events such as livestock shows, cooking contests, arts and crafts, and the Harvest Queen Pageant that highlight the skills and talents of people in the community. And whereas a midway featuring exciting rides and a diverse assortment of vendors is the fair's centerpiece and will engage attendees of all ages. And whereas the continued growth and success of the fair, which draws thousands of people over parts of two weeks, is a testament to the quality of its programming. And whereas the Hillsborough County Fair is an opportunity for friends and neighbors to gather in fellowship and celebrate the many ways their positive contributions have strengthened the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 18th through October 21st and October 25th through October 28th, 2018, as Hillsborough County Fair Days in Hillsborough County, and urges all residents to attend the event and celebrate the county's rich heritage. Dated today, the 17th of October, of course, signed by all seven of the commissioners." Tom, I'm going to let any of you that would like to say a few words to do so.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'll assure you, ladies and gentlemen, that any of these ladies would be better spokespersons than I am. So that's the quality, and a testament to the quality of the individuals that we have participating at the fair. We have over 1,500 folks that have entries in our fair this year in a variety of categories, both young and old alike. So we've got a diverse operation out there. And we try to highlight the history of the area and incorporate our youth activities and our STEM program this year now into the fair. So there's an opportunity for all residents of Hillsborough County to get involved. And I'd also want to take this opportunity, while I'm here, Commissioner, you've led the charge in recent years, but I'd like to thank the entire commission for their efforts on behalf of the county fair out there on that piece of hot fake property that proves to be challenging at times. But we literally are bursting at the seams with our growth, and a lot of that is the cooperation we've received from Hillsborough County Government as well. So on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Hillsborough County Fair and these fine young ladies and another entire group of volunteers that are not here today, we want to thank you for your proclamation and for your efforts on our behalf, on the entire
Thank you to all the commissioners for this proclamation. My name's Christina Wellen. I'm the 2018 Harvest Queen. And it's been such an honor representing something so great and unifying for our community. So many amazing volunteers have come out. We've seen already a lot of community service, and I just think it's a great thing. So thank you for all of your support. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I'm also, I'm Junior Harvest Queen, Bridget McLaughlin. And we wouldn't be able to do this without all the volunteers that don't really get recognized through this. So I'd also like to thank those and also come out and support the fair during the 2018 Harvest Fair.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And I do also want to remind everybody, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we will be having an event in Joe Chilera Park at 2:00. So that's great. Mr. Merrill, would you like to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, Commissioners, we only have one addition, and that's an off-the-agenda item. Commissioner Crist will present the Memorandum of Understanding declaring Hillsborough County, Florida, partner of the Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Coalition. And no other items have been removed from consent for any reason.
Yeah.
We have just a couple of scheduled time certens. Two public hearings at 10:00 a.m., D1, public hearing approving the list of real property inventory appropriate for affordable housing. And D2, a first public hearing to reconsider or to consider enactment of an ordinance providing for a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for amendments to the comp plan. And at 10:15, F3 is Commissioner Murman's item, accepting the Hillsborough County Opioid Plan of Action. At 10:30, E1, special appearance by Martine Collier, Executive Director of the Arts Council. 10:45, F4, Commissioner Murman's item to review policies for the Commission on Status of Women. And 11, F2, Commissioner Kemp's item, asking to adopt calculated fees for the Hillsborough County City/County Planning Commission. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White. Please record your vote. And we will now go down to the podiums for Commissioner Crist to present.
Motion carried seven to zero.
He's going to present the agreement that was signed.
Mr. Merrill, could you please join us down here? Thank you for joining us, Madam Chair. I'm presenting this today as the commission appointee to serve on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Commission. I've had the pleasure of serving on behalf of our board for the last nearly eight years. And for me, it's been an enjoyable assignment, having grown up in Pinellas County in half of my life and spending the other half of my life in Hillsborough County and still dividing my life between the two, between our home on the beach there and our home here. I clearly appreciate what the region has to offer as a whole. And when you take in consideration all six of our counties and the cities within our counties and all of the uniqueness that we share, it makes us, I believe, the strongest region in the country. And as we begin to do more things together, I think we'll be able to achieve much more than we have in the past. Especially coming from the legislature, Commissioner Murman would testify to the fact, and Commissioner Miller, that the strong legislators are the ones who come from the strong delegations, and those are the regional groups in the state, like down south or up north. And we are now beginning to emerge as a leader there as well. The Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Council is an initiative of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council and has been formed to coordinate climate adaptation and mitigation activities across county lines, to advance local and regional responses to the preparations for economic and social disruption projected to result from sea level rise, and to provide state and local agencies with access to technical assistance and support in addressing the effects of climate change. Hillsborough County, Florida, has adapted or adopted the Memorandum of Understanding, creating the Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Council and Coalition, and joins the coordinated efforts to enhance our abilities to prepare, adapt, mitigate for the effects of sea level rise and climate change in our individual communities and throughout our entire Tampa Bay region. Signed by the Chair, Janet Long. And on behalf of our board in Hillsborough County, myself, I present this to our county administrator and our chairwoman. And thank all of you for your efforts in this, and we all look forward to working together.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Crist, for presenting that to you, to us, I mean, at the board. We will now move into the public comment portion of the meeting. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the board, please state your name, speak clearly into the microphone, and you will be given three minutes for each speaker. And we will start with Angela Birdsong for on-the-agenda items. Angela, followed by Kent Bailey. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Angela Birdsong. I live in Tampa, Florida, zip code 33618. Candidate Hillsborough County Commission. Like to first address B13, the realignment of Upper Tampa Bay Trail. And I feel that I'm just here as a voice for the people, and the majority of people that I have spoken with do not want the trail moved, realigned, touched in any way. We consider it a gem of the Tampa Bay area. Over 300,000 people utilize the trail, and we want it to stay just as it is. I think maybe a more feasible solution might be to have the developer actually back up a little bit, maybe redesign their plan, maybe have less units. But overall, we would like to see the trail remain just as it is. Also wanted to address F2, calculated user fees. It's recently come to my attention that along with Tampa, Hillsborough County not getting their impact fees when other surrounding counties can, we also are not getting our user fees from developers to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars. And the thing is that these fees affect taxpayers because the county has to subsidize that money with hard-working taxpayer dollars. And as a citizen, I'm outraged, and I know this is going to be a scandalous matter, when people find out that commissioners who've been here for over a decade think that this is okay. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crist, do you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Merrill, I'm a little confused, listening to what she has to say and what I've been led to believe here. The Speaker just said we're not getting impact fees. Is that true?
No, that's not true. We, in fact, raised fees for transportation the last couple of years. And we do collect fees for development review. We do collect fees for building inspections. So we have a wide array of fees that we levy and collect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Kent Bailey, followed by Dana Lazarus. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kent Bailey. I reside in Hillsborough County, 33592. Like most citizens this season, I find my mailbox full of campaign pieces from both incumbents and challengers. And I've noticed a trend in those, excuse me, mail pieces. Most of the challengers and virtually all of the incumbents will say in their mailpiece that they are for improved transportation, controlling sprawl, and making development pay its fair share. So it's very clear from the mail pieces that are reviewed that the elected officials in this county do understand what is important to the voters. What is less clear is why there is such a gap between the fees charged to developers and the cost to the taxpayers of the processing of permits and user fees, which is money out of our budget. Virtually every, pains me to remind you of this, but virtually every study that's been done in Hillsborough County, including a survey by Go Hillsborough, shows that there is a significant lack of trust between the citizens of the county and the government of the county. And it doesn't help when we have studies like, stories like the one by Steve Contorno that identified tens of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions going to various public officials. And it doesn't help when citizens feel as though development is really running this county. We have an opportunity today, you have an opportunity today, to take a first step towards restoring trust and restoring balance in a fee schedule. The fees that are F2, reviewed by F2, haven't been changed since they were created in 1987. They represent a fraction, a very small fraction, of the fees that are charged in other counties, adjoining counties. And while adopting the calculated fee schedule that you will be considering today won't cover the cost of processing the development applications, at least it will be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dana Lazarus, followed by Cindy Grant. Good morning.
Good morning. Dana Lazarus, 33610. So I am currently a master student of urban and regional planning at USF. I'm also a member of the Student Planning Organization. And first of all, thank you for the regional coordinating on resiliency. That's wonderful. That's a great step in the right direction. We absolutely need to be coordinating regionally. I consider the county a region that also everyone needs to like work together towards a common vision. I'll speak to that in a second. I'm here to speak on item F2. We absolutely should raise these fees. The fact that we only charged $1,000 to review an application to approve 13,200 homes, that's going to make that developer so very much money, while other counties like Pasco Manatee would charge 25,000 to review that same application, and Miami-Dade would charge 230,000 to review that same application. We're one of the most recognizable cities, city names in the state, and we need to capitalize on how awesome we are by, you know, charging developers, the same way that other places all around the country do. You also, I just learned recently, approved a 600-home development in Baum. Similar to last March, we approved a 500,000 development off Lithia Pine Crest, which involved a land use change. And I emailed Al Higginbottom, sorry, I'm not supposed to say names, but basically, what I got back was that it's just a simple property rights issue, but it's not, because we are not moving towards a common vision that helps everybody in the county when we do little changes like this. The Urban Land Institute advised that you stop approving these sprawling land developments because it's moving us away from a vision that, at least I have, and, you know, I wish that you would coordinate and figure out what the vision is for this county, because otherwise, it's just going to be common, it's just going to be interest saying, "I want this, I want that, I want this." If it's moving towards a common goal, then you're able to say, "Okay, does this move us towards our goal?" So there are a lot of policy issues within approving these developments. Parking minimums, moving the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, I think is a parking minimum issue. But that's an antiquated thing, that developers are subsidizing cars by needing to put a certain amount of parking spaces. Why can't developers also subsidize transportation, multi, multiple modes? So I'm running out of time, I think.
Me, I have 15 seconds.
Yeah. I have a lot of proposals based on my studies in this master's program for how we can do better, about how we can form a vision and specific policies to get us there. I really want to work with you all, so maybe you can.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Cindy Grant. And that's for on the agenda items. Off the agenda would be Joanne O'Brien and Anthony Johnson. Is Cindy here? Cindy Grant? Okay. I don't see her. Okay. We'll go to off the agenda items. Joanne O'Brien, followed by Anthony Johnson.
Joanne O'Brien, 33610, Thrasher Drive. I'm here to speak about our pets, and I ask this question, how long do rabies vaccines last? And the answer is, it could be one to three years. Veterians and anybody that works in the animal field must have a rabies test and get a teeter test every so often, whereas our animals don't get that teeter test, which we are injecting and over-vaccinating our animals, which some of these vaccines are causing carcinomas. I went through that with one of the cats, which had to have mammary glands taken away, and then came up with another cancer elsewhere in the digestive system, which cost me, which I'm still paying off to the tune of $6,000 to try to save this cat. And it's pretty upsetting, and I think if we can find a cost-effective way in order to teeter test our animals maybe every two years to see where their antibodies are. Now, these vets tell us that these vaccines are dead vaccines, but they fail to tell us that once they're injected, especially into cats, they get inflammation, and they don't do well to that. And in order to get these dead vaccines to work, they put an additive in it, something like an aluminum, or it's called adjuvant to that degree. So we need to look at our animals, and sometimes they're dying in the shelters, because we don't know what we're picking in up off the street. They come in, do they give them a rabies shot right away? This I don't know. They might have had one already. So we should be looking into this to keep our pets safe. And I'm sure a lot of you up there have pets, and it's something to think about. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joanne, for all your attention to our pets.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Anthony Johnson. I'm 12 years old. I attend Jenny's Middle School in Steffna, Florida. I started a bottle of water drive because of the lead in the school water fountains. I found about my research that there are schools that are over 50 years old with, like, dirty pipes, and that's how, like, the lead is getting into the, into the water. And I started, also started a water drive so kids in school, they don't worry, so they don't worry about the lead in the water, they just worry about what they come to school for, education. Also, if any, if anybody here want to help me on my journey with the water, you could, you could donate some water to 4411 or 48th Street, and we'll bring it to schools in Hillsborough County.
Well, I just want to commend you for having the courage to come here, and I love the mission you're on. I understand the problem. I hope you take what you've just said to the school board meeting. Have you done that? Have you gone to a school board meeting and talked to the school board to tell them what you're doing?
Not yet.
Okay. You need to just get in touch with as many of those school board members as possible, administrators, and let them know about your mission, but I do commend you and thank you for all that you're doing. Commissioner White? You guys are, I apologize, but we're going to have to raise our hands to be recognized. My computer is still not working.
I want to commend you for coming here as well today, young man. Don't go anywhere yet. So we, we did have a county commissioner recently step up to ask if anything can be done to help, help you guys out over at the school district. Commissioner Hagan, I thank you for your leadership on that. Where can, where can folks drop off a case or more of water if they'd like to donate to your cause?
My grandma's house at 4411 North 48th Street.
Okay. Can you write that down and give it to the clerk's office staff for us Commissioners up here? We'd like to, I know I'd personally like to see if I can make a delivery to you.
Can you state that address again?
Is that your home address, young man?
Yes.
Is there a better place, like a school, that we can?
We bring it to the schools.
Okay. All right.
And what was your address again? Just speak real clearly into the microphone so we can hear.
4411 North 48th Street, 33610.
Because we do have a lot of people in the county that are watching this meeting right now on TV, and they might be able to help you. That's why I wanted you to state the address. Good job. Thank you. Cindy Grant, I did call her earlier. You're signed up for public comment?
No, I'm actually here with the behavioral.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay, that does conclude our public comment portion of the meeting. I'll ask for a motion to approve consent. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White to approve consent. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, your first item is your 10:00 AM public hearings, D1, is your first item? And who is here for this item? Cheryl?
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Director of Affordable Housing, and I'm here this morning to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the list of real property inventory appropriate for affordable housing pursuant to Section 125.379 Florida statutes and authorize the acceptance of the properties in the capital asset, financial records of the Board of County Commissioners. There will be no financial impact.
Thank you, Cheryl. This is a public hearing, and we'll go ahead and open up that public hearing now on item D1. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of item D1? Anyone to speak in opposition to item D1? Okay, close of public hearing. A motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item D1. Miller, I'm sorry. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Johanna Lundgren with the County Attorney's Office, and this is the first public hearing to consider the enactment of an ordinance providing for a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for and the processing of amendments to the Future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan, which proposed to establish future land use designations other than natural preservation or which otherwise proposed to establish development rights upon submerged lands for a period of 180 days following the effective date of the ordinance or until the effective date of amendments to the comprehensive plan, which will clarify the requirements for the creation of development rights in submerged lands. And this is the first public hearing. No action is required this morning, and the second public hearing would be scheduled for November 8 at 10:00 AM.
Okay, we will do a public hearing today, but we will not be voting on anything, so we'll open up the public hearing on item D2. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D2? Anyone to speak in opposition to item D2? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll see that item back on, what was the date?
November 8.
November 8. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
All right. If the board would waive the rules, I believe everyone is here for your 10:15 time, certain?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to waive the rules. Please record your vote.
Who had the motion in the second?
Miller and White.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you all. Did you get it? Okay. I want to thank you all. This is really an important day for Hillsborough County. Just want you all to know that this is a work product for the last 13 months, and I'm going to make, try to make some brief remarks. I just want to start off by saying, a year ago, we had a summit, an opioid summit, of which we had over 500 people attend, wanting to take action in Hillsborough County to stop the opioid overdoses that are just becoming an epidemic in Hillsborough County. We did, after that, we did convene the stakeholders, and we did form a huge work group of probably 75 to 100 people that were at every single meeting. This is the dedication and commitment that, to the problem we have in Hillsborough County for opioid abuse and the serious effects of addiction. And I'd like all the members of the task force to please stand. I know that we're going to hear from a few of you, but please, if everybody would please stand, that's here for item F3. You can really see that we had a lot of really good commitment and dedication, and with the, I'm just proud of your work, and this was a consensus work product. We didn't know what we were going to come out with, but we've had national speakers come in, talk to us, try and tell us what the trends are, which we should invest in, and that is what we have come to today. But we have one goal, and one goal only, is to, because one death from opioid overdose is one death too many, and we will break the cycle of addiction here in Hillsborough County. This crosses over all socioeconomic boundaries. This is the rich, the poor, the middle age. This is adolescence, which is where we're seeing our biggest rise in opioid deaths, unfortunately, but seniors, everyone is affected, afflicted by this because they just start, it starts out so innocently from a surgery where maybe they got over-prescribed opioids. It's funny, last night I was surf, channel surfing and saw on the Connors, they rose off, they rode off, what was her name? Rosalie?
Roseanne.
Roseanne. They rode her off to an opioid overdose. And I thought that, I said, I was sitting there, looking, watching, looking at my notes I was going to say today, and here it is on TV. But you know, we have also filed a lawsuit. We will not see the fruits of that product for probably quite some time, we hope not, but we know that those dollars will be used if and when they come here to this county. We know also that law enforcement is important to this problem, but from all the national experts, from all the results that we got, we found out that treatment is the best for opioid addiction. Not locking them up, actually, our jail has turned into, they have the most beds for detox from people with opioids, and we need to stop this. They're coming into the emergency rooms in our jails. I'm just going to give you a few facts. We've seen over 1,072 opioid overdose deaths in our county since 2012. That's a 24% increase, and of course, that goes back to the fraudulent marketing of these drugs and the excessive amount of drugs that are being over-prescribed. We also, this is the one statistic that I think is the most painful to me, is that we lead every county in the state of Florida in the number of children born addicted to opioids. opioids. In 2015 alone, we have 579 children born that are already substance exposed and addicted to opioids, and the cost to our county and our state is almost $40 million. So these stats are high. We did a lot of good work at this county commission on the pill mills. That was- but what happened is, is we just pushed them off into more drugs, heroin, fentanyl. So, you know, it's just, it's an issue that we have to embrace. We know it's impacting our county in a huge way. We have done so much already, the pill mills, jail diversion, mental health drug court, we've done so much. But one in 10 people who need drug treatment are getting it. That's not good. That means nine of 10 people are not getting drug treatment, and we know that this, all the new funding we put towards this are going to help. Every dollar we spend will save $7 in criminal costs and $4 in healthcare costs. So we need to continue to be aggressive. I want to thank the leadership of Gene Early, who really did some substantial work on this, and he is going to now come forward. This, we're not, we're going to have some brief presentations from each of the area. They will be brief, I promise, but, and then I'll ask, I'll make a motion to move to receive the report. So Gene, you want to come forward?
Good morning. I'm Gene Early. I'm the Director for Healthcare Services Department, and I wanted to do a very quick presentation before we go into each of the individuals. I first want to say thank you to Commissioner Merman for her leadership, and thank all of the commissioners of the board for all their support in this initiative, especially Mike Mero and Carl Harness and their group for helping as well. This is an innovative and cost-effective program, and it's an approach that we haven't done before. Basically, it was to discuss actions necessary to address the opioid crisis and build a greater awareness and partnerships to manage the drug issues facing our county.
I have.
And to identify current resources available in Hillsborough County to address this crisis, and then discuss and identify best practices that could be implemented at the local level. There are a number of things that you've already done, and I think they're worth mentioning. In 2010, Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners enacted an ordinance to eliminate pill mills, behavioral health jail diversion program that we put into place, co-located behavioral and primary care pilot programs for Hillsborough County healthcare participants, the mental health court, integration of social determinants such as housing for behavioral health, intermediary beds, and in 2018, Hillsborough County announced the lawsuit that Commissioner Merman mentioned. I wanted to really just point out that in May 2018, when after following the opioid summit, we did a follow-up meeting to develop specific strategies, responsible entities were identified, and possible funding mechanisms that could be accessed by the community and various community partners and stakeholders. Local community stakeholders participated in developing a multifaceted approach, including strategies, tactics, durations, and potential costs needed to address the crisis. And you can see that there are a number of people and a number of different stakeholders that were involved in this, including the school district, community providers, law enforcement, medical community, community stakeholders, and then federal and state and local government. We looked at as well for resources. We broke it down into four main areas, education, prevention, treatment, and recovery, and they were done basically to follow pretty much the strategies that were being developed at the federal and state levels. And the action plan identifies phase one. There'll be a second phase later on, but this is the first one. And then we established work groups to do that, and that's, education was Dr. Mitchell, prevention was Cindy Grant, treatment was Mary Lynn Alny, and recovery was Asha Terminello. The total amount of this proposed action plan is $13,713,000 for the various areas, and the work group leaders will serve in a lead capacity and work in the plan for implementation.
Funds were not general revenue funds.
I was going to say that.
Okay.
Basically, these are indigent funds from our indigent trust fund, and we focused basically initially on the indigent population in the Hillsborough County healthcare plan, and then we're using other funds such as the Central Florida Behavioral Health Network and others that we're going to identify for other parts of the plan that deal with the other part of the county and other people. So our first president, presenter, is Dr. Beth Mitchell. Is she here? She's not here yet, so we'll come back to her. I kind of knew that she wasn't here. So we'll start with prevention, and that will be Ms. Cindy Grant. She's the executive director for Hillsborough County's Anti-Drug Alliance. Cindy, you want to go on first?
I'm Cindy Grant. I'm the Director of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance and a resident in 33634. So our prevention subcommittee put together the tactics and the action plan, looking at four strategies with a total proposed allocation of $6.4 million. And out of that, the first strategy is to increase access to Narcan for local providers. There's a duration of 12 months for this strategy and a cost of $60,000. And the responsible parties for this would be the local providers, and they would first identify and inventory sources for Narcan within the county, develop specifications for distribution, develop the process for application and recording distribution, provide education on usage and outreach on availability, with a big push coming during the Drug Opioid Awareness Week in May. And through that, we'll also identify experts in the community to do the training and to look at mental health first aid, trauma-informed care as well. So the second strategy is nurses in schools, and that one has a duration to get it started of 12 months with a cost a little over $2 million. And the responsible parties for this are the school district, the medical school, and local providers. And with this, we will establish short and long-term plans for the program within those first 12 months, target LPNs and Masters, over a five-year transitioning into RNs. Develop relationships and partner with hospitals and federally qualified health centers through sponsorships and funding. Utilize the program to identify and work with at-risk youth, age 14 to 16 years old, and be able to do an assessment and screening and provide treatment or interventions for those youth. And create a process for recruitment of medical personnel to participate in the program and develop relationships with the school district and the medical schools. So I'll go on to the next. Sorry, wrong direction. The next one is to enhance opioid diversion investigations and prosecutions, and this one too has a starting period of 12 months with a cost of $325,000. And the responsible parties are Hillsborough County, our local providers, and law enforcement. And with this, we would enhance opioid diversion investigations and prosecutions by working with law enforcement and the state attorney to promote opioid diversion program, implement a drug court pilot program, and identify stable funding for the pilot project, explore diverting from arrest and referral to treatment through the central receiving facility, and work with law enforcement to establish criteria for referral to the central receiving facility. Next, we have prevention. That's the next presentation. Okay. And the fourth one is to provide social determinants of health for Hillsborough County healthcare plan members, which are the conditions in places where people live, learn, work, and play, healthy food, safe neighborhoods, good education. The duration for this is 12 months to get it started with a cost of $4 million, and the responsible entities for this is Hillsborough County Healthcare Services through the Healthy Living Program offered at the Community Resource Centers, and offer healthy living at local provider clinics. So that's the prevention portion.
I'd like to introduce Mary Lynn Alny, and she's the CEO of Daco.
Okay. I think I know most people here. I want to first thank the committee that worked on this with me as well, for treatment, also for Gene for his work on it, as well as the insight of the county commission, so thank you for that. I have six strategies under treatment, and I'll be brief. The first is to create targeted integrative case management with comprehensive support of all social determinants. It's a wraparound service to help increase and improve follow-up and follow-through of the patients. The second is to focus on evidence-based prevention, education, medication-assisted treatment, yay, and recovery programs in general, and that's $1,118,000. The third one is to develop screening interventions, early screening and interventions that's family-supported, community-based, and occurs across prevention, treatment, and recovery management as a continuum in the primary care setting, and that's $85,000. The fourth is to expand jail diversion and transition planning for out-of-jail patients to enhance the system through community collaboration. That's $450,000, and it's in its case management of those patients leaving jail, as well as vivitrol in jail. And the fifth is to request additional mental health and substance abuse funding for intermediary-type beds, which we don't have in our county, and that would be $2,770,000. And then finally, the sixth one is to provide additional substance abuse and mental health funding to local providers for treatment of Hillsborough County health plan members with beneficial outcomes, and that's $900,000, for a total of $4.9 million. And I really thank you for listening to our presentation.
Thank you, Mary Lynn, for all you do. Okay, next one is recovery.
This is Asha Terminello.
Good morning. I'm Asha Terminello with Agency for Community Treatment Services, and the chief operating officer. I'm presenting the recovery strategies. There are two strategies to present. The first involves promoting recovery support services in a care coordination model. This would be to establish what we already have with Grace Point and Axe for the community to provide more care coordination model throughout the different various in-reaching abilities with the EDs and the jails, and of course, in the community. The domain is estimated to cost $875,000. For this specific strategy, we're looking at $500,000. We'll move to the second one. The second strategy is to promote recovery support services at the healthy living facilities, different community resources, and the EDs, we're looking to provide recovery support specialists that would be in-reaching into the various facilities to provide groups and individual services, but mainly to provide linkages back to the community providers. This would be 375. The participating organizations are Northside, Axe, Grace Point, Daco, Tampa Family. I don't think I'm leaving anyone else. Oh, okay. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
And then our last one was the most very important one.
This is education, and Joe Rutherford is going to do that for us, and basically, he's the CEO of Grace Point. Dr. Mitchell wasn't able to make it. She's basically with the jail, and so there might have been something.
She's the medical director at the jail.
Yes, she is. So, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. The fourth part of our component for the opioid has to do with the education. You'll see that there are four pieces to this. The first is to test the drug purity, to educate users about the potency of the new use of the synthetic and the fentanyl. Tactics behind that is going to be to identify the national harm reduction models, also to develop within Hillsborough County a geo-mapping, so we can then better monitor the local trends within Hillsborough County. That's a duration of six to nine months for $115,000, and the lead agency will be identified for that. The second piece of this is to inform the public of issues related to opioid illicit drug use and drug resources available within the community. Obviously, as you'd expect with the communications plan, the various media channels, incorporating all the modes of communication, as we should. Again, six to nine months, $100,000 with a lead agency to be identified. The education summary includes two other pieces. The number one on this is to educate healthcare teams, social services, late communities, basically all the providers within Hillsborough County about signs of addiction for detection. We estimate $90,000 for that. And the second piece there is to target healthcare professional intervention education for an additional $80,000, so to really get in front of this for the early identification. All those four components together come to a total of $385,000 proposed for the education component.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you for all you do at Grace Point.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I wanted to just quickly say the outcomes for this. Basically, we think that there'll be a 20% reduction overall medical cost, based on actuarial estimates, conservative $10 to $12 million. 10 to 15% reduction in recidivism, we estimate that at $7.6 million. 10% reduction in hospital stays and costs estimated at 1.3. 20% reduction in deaths, $92,000, or 4.2 million, and our total estimated return on this is about $25.1 million. I also wanted to take just this opportunity to thank all of our members of the mental health task force or behavioral health task force. I would also like to thank personally our chairman, Brad Harriman, who is the CEO of Suncast. I would also like to thank everybody, and there's more people that have come in since we started, so I'd like them to all stand up. Everyone that's part of this, stand up. So I just wanted to show you that the stakeholders and the breadth of this is really, really amazing, and I just wanted to say thank you. And all of our federally qualified health centers, Sherry is also with Tampa Family Health Center, has been actively involved in this, so has all TGH, and so has St. Joseph, and all of our behavioral health providers, so we thank you very much for all the support, and we-
Gene, I just can't say enough, and I hope the community recognizes what an important first step this is. This is huge. We are one of the first counties in the state of Florida that actually has a plan now, and we have funding because we do have our indigent healthcare tax from our trust fund, and it's just that the statement, we're going to stand with our families who are trying to fight opioid addiction, and unfortunately, too many people are dying, and we need to stop that, and we're going to support them, we're going to support our stakeholders, and we're just going to, of course, our law enforcement, I see our law enforcement out there, they're always working very, very hard to help keep our community safe. So I just want to thank you all, and I'm going to pass the gavel and just make a motion to receive this report, to accept the Hillsborough County opioid plan of action.
Okay, I've received the gavel. First, before you do that, Commissioner Merman, I want to take a moment. Thank you, Gene. Thank you to all of you out there for coming together and helping to make this happen. I know this is not an easy thing to do, and there's been a lot of work in this, but Madam Chair, your efforts, your leadership, and quite frankly, your love is- But, Madam Chair, your efforts, your leadership, and quite frankly, your love is stellar. You've got to be recognized. I've known you three decades. I've served with you two and a half decades, and I have watched you champion this issue along with other necessary health and human service issues relentlessly during that period of time. I know that this is more than a duty, it's a passion for you. And I think it's important that everyone know how long you have been involved in this and how much effort you have put forward, and we are greatly appreciative.
Thank you. As you all know, I have a personal tragedy in my family, and so it's really something that I'm very committed to, to keep working on. Thank you, Commissioner Chris. So, there's a motion and a second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Who is the second from?
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller. Just wanted to make sure the record had it straight. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the board, the clerk will open the board for a vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Congratulations, Commissioner Merman.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Commissioner, your 10:30 time certain is E1, special appearance by Martine Collier.
Thank you for those kind words.
You can just hit left or right.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting the Arts Council here today to update you on our accomplishments during the second half of the 2018 fiscal year. In fulfillment of not only our county contract, but also our strategic plan, the Arts Council has been intensely focused in the final half of this year on expanding our reach throughout all of Hillsborough County. We conducted informational workshops about our newest grant program in Plant City, Riverview, and Ruskin this spring. Additionally, we located an additional 34 new cultural organizations that we added to the 2018-19 Guide to Arts and Culture for the greater Tampa-Hillsborough region, and you were just given a copy of our new publication, the second edition. By the end of September, we had closed out all of the 2018 Cultural Development Grants awarded this fiscal year. A total of $388,000 was paid out to 25 diverse cultural nonprofits in Hillsborough County during this year. Our Professional Development Grant Program for Artists was expanded in 2018 to include emerging as well as established artists. A total of 20,000 in grants was awarded through this program. In late September, we announced the recipients of our new Community Arts Impact Grant for This grant is open not just to cultural organizations, but to any nonprofit in the county wishing to develop a project of a cultural nature. It is a simpler process than our Cultural Development Grant and is particularly well-suited to smaller organizations with less experience in preparing grant proposals. These recipients, as you will see from the locos, represented a wide variety of projects that spanned the county from Winthrop Arts to the South Shore Symphony Orchestra, Plant City Entertainment, and the South Shore Arts Council. Partnering with the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center in August, we held a highly successful seminar for local artists to assist them in being more successful on the business side of art, learning ways to better promote themselves and sell their work. Over 40 artists attended. To align with best practices nationally in arts grant-making, we converted all grant applications and grant agreements to an online system this spring. Additionally, we also effectively utilized technology to promote all the cultural activities in Hillsborough County through our calendar site, Arts Tampa Bay. Last year, when we produced the first edition of A Guide to Arts and Culture, we greatly underestimated how popular this publication would be. As a result, we only printed 5,000 copies, and by four months later, we were completely out with the public clamoring for more. As a result, we more than doubled the number of copies printed in September 2018. This year's edition also has expanded to include even more cultural organizations and festivals. Popular, very popular with realtors, the publication also has a huge fan base of hospitals and medical offices who find it an effective tool for attracting physicians and other medical personnel to our community. More and more businesses in the community are seeing its value as a relocation tool to bring talent and investment to Hillsborough County. A special highlight during the last half of this fiscal year was learning that Americans for the Arts and the National Association of Counties awarded the 2018 Public Leadership in the Arts Award to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Your consistent longstanding support of arts in the county stood in stark contrast to the decision of the Florida State Legislature this year to drastically cut arts funding and was recognized nationally through this award and the press release that went with it. Thank you all for your support, not just of the Arts Council, but on behalf of so many cultural organizations and attractions in this community. I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any. Say my name, Martine Collier.
Martine, thank you so much. You're so, you're working so hard on the Arts Council. I mean, you can tell. You're just, you're really giving us good results. Commissioner Chris, who is on your Arts Council, would like to make some comments.
As always, Martine, you're incredible. From the day you walked in the door, things have begun to change, and for the better. Our Arts Council was good before, but it's even greater now that we're being implemented into economic development, because so, for so long, arts was viewed as a luxury and as a wealthy person's activity, which we both know is far from the truth, that you find art form and arts at all levels of economic, social strata, and arts are so critical in the learning process, in the documenting process, in history, the present, and in the future. And the things that have been implemented since you're joining the Arts Council have really helped to grow the visibility of Hillsborough County, the city of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace on a national level. And Mr. Merrill, thank you for working with Ron Barton in the economic development portion of Hillsborough County and getting Lindsay Kimball on our board, because she has been... Lindsay, can you stand? You're always behind the scenes.
She is.
But you have been wonderful, as well as a very active board member and very engaged, not as a wallflower like so often we see on many boards. And this is going to be very helpful in helping to promote the quality of arts life and creativity here in our home.
And put us on the national radar, where we deserve to be for our arts and culture.
Amen.
Thank you all, commissioners.
Good work.
Thank you for everything you do for the arts.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Martine. Your next item is your 10:45 time certain, F4, which is Commissioner Merman's item.
Thank you. Is it F4? Oh, yeah, F4. The reason I'm bringing this up today is there, someone approached me wanting to have a seat on the board for the Commission on Status of Women. I'm going to ask Jim Taylor to come up. I don't think Brandon's here. But I, we have to, as a commission, approve to add a position to the Commission on Status of Women. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And also, it's the feeling on the Commission on Status of Women that they also would like to not have elected officials on the board. Is that correct?
I think I've heard that. I'm just getting back in and getting up to date on all those conversations, but I believe, yes, yes, ma'am.
So, the individual that wants on the Commission on Status of Women is the Children's Board, because the Commission on Status of Women is doing a lot around issues involving children, so she's actually spending a lot of time going to the meetings. So, and, so I would like to pass the gavel and make a motion to add the Children's Board as a position on the Commission on Status of Women and not allow elected officials to serve on that board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none?
Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller?
It is, but sometimes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes. Commissioner Merman, is there an elected official on the board now?
I think what they're anticipating is there's someone running for state representative who's not elected, and, but they're anticipating that that person would be elected. So then, they just got into a discussion. If those kind of things happen, they just don't want elected officials on the board. You know the situation.
I have, that's my point, too. She's not elected yet. She's on the ballot. She will probably be elected, because she has a right in candidate, and I can guarantee you, once she's elected, she will not be on that board.
Okay. But are you okay with not having elected officials on the board? Yeah, okay. Thank you. So, I made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I see no one else in the queue. Clerk will open the board, we'll vote.
Thank you all.
Motion carried six to zero.
Commissioner Kemp, do you want to, I want the board to waive the rules and move to your item? It's not 11 o'clock yet, but if it's okay...
I...
Be okay with that?
Be okay with that.
So, the board needs to waive the rules?
Okay, we have motion to waive the rules, and then we have a second. Should we waive the rules? Okay, Commissioner Miller, second there. Commissioner Wyatt made the motion, so please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner Kemp, are you going to make some opening remarks?
I am, thank you. I will make some opening remarks, and then I'll call up Ms. Ornita to answer a few questions. I first raised the issue of our outdated planning commission fees about five months ago at our May 16th board meeting, when I asked for a report comparing Hillsborough County land use planning fees with the fees imposed by Pasco, Manatee, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties. Four months ago, at the June land use meeting, Melissa Ornita, the executive director of our planning commission, reported that our fees are drastically lower, shamefully, I think, lower than the fees charged in other counties, including our neighbors in Pasco and Manatee, as well as Broward and Palm Beach Counties. She provided a chart at that time, which I've included with this agenda item, and I'll ask staff to put up now. So, when you look at this, as you see now, in Hillsborough, a developer can seek to change our comprehensive plan, that's our county's guiding policy document for growth and development, for a mere $1,000. In Manatee County, an application such as this, depending on acreage, can cost as much as $20,000. In Pasco, as much as $25,000. I did a calculation, too, for Broward at $32,000, and believe it or not, Miami-Dade was $230,000. At that time, Ms. Ornita also stated that Hillsborough County's planning commission fees had not been changed or updated for more than 30 years. You can take that slide down. Thank you. Ms. Ornita also reported that our fees account for a very small percentage of the budget that supports the planning commission's work. She explained that the vast majority of funding for the planning commission is paid for by hard-working taxpayers, who pay ad valorem real property taxes on their homes, businesses, and other real property throughout the county. In June, Ms. Ornita also explained that a fee study was done in 2016 by Tyndale Oliver to update the fees. Although the study, which is included in your agenda item, is dated December 2016, that was actually just when I took office, it was never brought to my attention until I stumbled on it while doing my own research this year. The study lays out very modest increases in fees based on the cost and amount of effort the staff must put forward in reviewing these applications. The study considers data for three years, from 2012 to 2015, including documented planning commission staff time, the cost of advertisements, letters, signs, notices, and characteristics of the projects evaluated by the planning commission staff, which affect the effort needed to effectively conduct reviews. Ms. Ornita reported that the study did not consider overhead costs or any things like that that are done for all the amendments, but it's based on the staff time related to individual amendments. It also doesn't account for the number of costs associated with required public hearings. The study also included stakeholder interviews that were done at that time. This is again at the end of 2016. And here are some of the comments, I quote from page 15. And as I reread, and you can see in your agenda item, there wasn't a lot of interest or concern about this very mild change in the fees. As I quote from page 15, stakeholders were aware that the user fees have not been updated for a long time, and that the current fees are unlikely to capture the effort associated with providing services. They suggested that the fees should be fair, and that the fees they see in other communities tend to be higher than what the planning commission is currently charging. So, I'd like to bring Ms. Ornita up and just ask a few questions.
Commissioner Kemp, before she comes up, I was reviewing this item, and I really appreciate your passion for this, and I completely understand. No, it's not. But, you know, this really, I think this item really needs to come back to us, where we can spend and do a very thorough review with the results that Melissa got. You know, when we did the mobility fee, we did, we had an extensive process that really involved public input, stakeholders, and actually, it was part of our budget process going forward. And I, I mean, we looked at this issue in my Economic Prosperity Committee. Do you remember, Commissioner Miller? And, I mean, I'm just giving you my thoughts until we get too far in the weeds here, that I really think we need to bring this back at a later time, where we can really spend and devote the time on it, because this affects a lot of people. I saw the poor Tampa Bay on there, and they didn't know anything about it. And I understand, they don't know where's the money going, you know, all these, why, what's the justification for the increases? I understand Tyndale Oliver, he's, they've done a lot of work for us. But I'm just giving you my thoughts on this, that I wish you would support just bringing this back, so that we can do a more thorough review and make it part of our budget.
Well, I think once we hear more about it, we can, well, I do, I would like to continue with what I have here.
I'm just not sure we need to hear more about it. It needs to be a part of a larger presentation.
Well, I think it's important that we do hear about it now. It's been sitting there for two years in the dust. It's been 30 years. It's been three decades since we...
No, no, I completely understand that, but it's a process issue, not a desire issue.
I would say, Commissioner Merman, I was part of the meetings before I became a commissioner. As a community member, in between 2015 and 2016, I attended meetings, stakeholder meetings, different meetings with different community members, stakeholders. And why in the world can't we do something as minor as this? In the meantime, what we're doing is looking at, our taxpayers are subsidizing these development fees. This is a very small part, a very small part of what working people in this county are paying that they shouldn't be paying. We would be saving millions of dollars here that we could apply to the opioid program, that we could apply to drug addiction, to affordable housing, to all kinds of other things. So, I'd like to at least move forward and finish having a...
I'm not sure we really need to. I don't know how anybody else feels. I know Commissioner Hagan, you're in the queue. Do you want to, do you want to speak before we go further, or? we go further, or?
Excuse me, I think I have the floor, don't I?
Well, I know, but I'm calling you, I'm the chair.
I realize, but I would like to at least finish my item here.
Well, finish your opening remarks, but I just don't, I think we've got to do this as part of a process.
And that could be something, that could be the discussion after this, but I think it's really important to at least get the information out here as I have asked.
But in effect, you're gonna be asking her to give the information from the report, and that's what I'm trying to say, let's bring her back and do the report.
We can certainly preliminarily look at this right now, there's no reason not to have to talk about this right now. We do everything we can to avoid talking about this and, and looking at it. There isn't time in-
No, no, you made a comment, avoiding, we're not avoiding, it's just that we have a process. Where is it, we have to have public input. We, when we did the mobility fee-
I haven't even made a motion yet, Commissioner Merman.
Well, I mean, you know-
So, so I would like to at least just get the information on the table here.
Okay, finish your opening remarks. I'm not, I'm personally, I'm not in favor of going forward with this for the planning commission, just because I think they need to come back and give us a full-blown presentation. Just my comments.
I understand. Ms. Ornita, one of the things that we discussed in June, when I first brought, I brought it up in May, and I brought it up again in June, so we've had, we've been on notice here for a while, not to mention the 2016 study that as a community member, I was at, to some of those workshops that were done on, are still very low impact fees that we have, our mobility fees. But one of the things that was discussed in June is that while we typically charge $1,000 for a plan amendment, that we also have on the books, a plan amendment fee of $3,000 for amendments affecting 500 acres or more. But you explained that in the last several years, no applicant has ever paid more than $1,000. The fee study on page 16 addresses this issue and explains the stakeholders referred to the 500-acre fee as being isolated cases. Can you please explain why in the last many years, even this low $3,000 fee has never seemed to apply? So, it's clear to this board. And please specifically explain why the $3,000 fee did not apply to the RP2 Amendment embalm 4,400 acres and surrounding areas, applying to thousands of acres? Why wasn't, why was it just a $1,000 fee?
I mean, Commissioner Kemp and all, I mean, that's getting into an issue that's in a land use meeting, and I think there's a point being driven here, I'm not sure what it is, but we're not just talking about the study now, we're talking about the RP2 amendments. And I just think we're veering off the subject.
I would say this isn't a land use meeting, but this is a, a meeting of how we are funding our, our budget here, and, and this is a responsibility of the B O C C.
But this needs to be a part of our budget, I mean, that's what I think.
Well, it needs to be discussed now and as we move forward, so we can move on this. But if you could just answer that question for me, Ms. Ornita? My question was, could you explain why in the last many years, that even though we have $1,000 fee and a $3,000 fee, the $3,000 fee has never been charged, even for huge land use amendments?
Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission, the, in recent years, we have not had a map amendment to the future land use map that has been over 500 acres or greater. The RP2 Amendment that you referred to is a text amendment to the text of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, and therefore, the $1,000 fee applies.
Thank you. Can you also please talk about how much your workload has increased in the last five years or so?
Yes, the, for, well, this is for all four jurisdictions. In 2013, or FY13, we had 13 plan amendments, and in FY18, we had 47.
That's an amazing increase that you all are doing with basically the same staff that you've had and the same resources. My motions are, and I have-
Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Miller wants to be recognized.
You know, I, I've always said the art of being successful in this business is the art of compromise. And let's see if we can come to compromise, because Commissioner Kemp, I see, I hear your compassion, compassion on this. I understand what you're saying, and we are, we need to look at what we're doing and what we can do to, to increase these fees where we, don't put the burden on the taxpayers. I understand what Commissioner Merman is saying, that when we went through this with the mobility fees, we did a long, drawn-out, comprehensive meeting with stakeholders and studying, and worked with staff to put this in the budget. I wanna ask Ms., let me ask you one question. Did the, did the planning commissioners look at this? Did they see that?
They did review the study.
And what did they say?
They did not make a recommendation in 2016 on a proposal for a new fee. They asked that I continue to work with the four, each of the four jurisdictions and our stakeholders on looking at fees more comprehensively, so knowing that the plan amendment fee, or the rezoning fee, or the port fee is part of a number of fees that are charged on those applications often, look at it comprehensively. They also asked that we do a study of the efficiency of our internal plan amendment process, which we engaged a group from USF on a Six Sigma process in 2017, which identified a number of recommendations for process improvements that we have begun implementing.
Okay, so the planning commissioner gave you a litany of things that they wanted you to do?
Yes.
But they have not come forth and said, bring this, voted on this and bring it forth to the Board of County Commissioners? They have not done that?
They have not done that.
Okay. You know, one of the things that we've done through the years, I used to be a planning commissioner back in the Dark Ages, and Hillsborough County Government and the planning commission did not get along. And over the past couple of years, we've mended those fences and we're now working together. And to me, it feel, I would, I would feel very uncomfortable, Commissioner Kemp, if we voted on this and moved it forward, and the planning commissioners themselves have not had the opportunity to come back and say what they would like to bring forth to us. I understand your, what your concerns are, I understand your passion in this, but I think that, this is, this is me, and I think that from the commissioners, we will feel much more comfortable, number one, if the planning commissioners with their staff do their work, that's number one, and number two, we take the approach that we did with the mobility fees and work it out in our next year's budget. I understand that we could probably get there, where there will be some increases, but right now, the technique, the manner, the procedure that you're going through, I think needs to, to wait, that the planning commissioners do what they have to do, that their staff work with Mr. Merrill and his staff and our budget people, and then come back and look at that. So, I'm asking you at this point, just asking you, to please withdraw this, let the planning commissioners do what they have to do, then let them come back and work with Mr. Merrill and his budget staff, and then we can all sit down and work on the possibility, and we will probably do this, and then increase in the fees. But I think this approach right now is not the approach we should take. So, I'm just asking you to please withdraw it and let's work that way.
Well, what, I haven't yet made a motion, still.
I'm asking you not to make a motion, that's what I'm asking you.
Well, well, here, my motion would be this then, and I will, I, I do think that it is such a small amount, this increase, and, and so, and in the meantime, as they have for the last decades, taxpayers, working families in this county have subsidized these fees, but, so that's going on this minute, they're, they're shockingly low compared to our counties that border us, Pasco and Manatee, there's no reason why we should be selling ourselves so short here and doing so little to make development pay its fair share. But I'll make this motion here, and, and, because also, in June, nothing was moved on this, when I was asking about this being moved forward, I moved that the county staff and the planning commission staff reach out to the stakeholders about the fees paid in 2016 within the next 60 days, and they return with the results of that outreach at our first meeting in January 2019.
I think that isn't what Commissioner Miller asked for. Can you, would you like to state a motion, Commissioner Miller?
Well, she's got most of the floor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, she has a motion on the floor, is there a second? Okay, it dies for lack of a second. So, Commissioner Miller, do you wanna put something out there? Because you said it very well a minute ago, and again, Commissioner Kemp, nobody is disputing this whole thing. It's just that we gotta process, and the planning commission's gotta weigh in, our staff, the public, everything. We just gotta go that way.
I would just say, Commissioner, in response to that, that it has been since 2016 that this study was completed, at the end of 2016, so we've had two years to do that. I brought this up in May, I brought this up in June, we've had so much time, I've, I've never seen such incredible foot dragging on the smallest of moves to do this, and I just think that it's time. It's been three decades, I mean, what hasn't increased in three decades? It's incredible that we have forced our taxpayers here, working families, to subsidize this so much.
Well, I think, you know, going back to the May and June thing, I mean, yeah, it did come up, but you, at that point, you should have asked staff to take a look at it and incorporate it into the budget somehow. I think that's what Commissioner Miller is referring to, so Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Fellow party member, listen to me, okay?
And I'm, my, I lost my screen again, sorry.
My motion is to allow the planning commissioners and their staff to complete their review of what Ms. Zorni, what she, the executive director explained to us, when I'm asking them to possibly have that done within the next 90 days. So, therefore, their planning commissioners can review this and vote on it, and make their recommendations to this board, no, recommend recommendations to the staff, to Mr. Merrill and his staff, the budgetary staff, therefore, that we can work on bringing forth whatever recommendations that they may have in increasing these fees, and working with our upcoming, next year's budget, that they can bring that forth to this Board of County Commissioners.
Including public comment.
Including public comment. That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second for his?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan.
Mr. Merrill.
Mr. Merrill?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna add that, you know, we, we've had conversations, the, the study's a fine study, Tyndale's a fine outfit, but the study did not look at though, and they weren't asked to, was, should the planning commission be doing some of the things that they're doing? Is there redundancy between what the planning commission's doing, what our development review staff's doing? It's an end-to-end process-
Yeah, can you speak up, because there's got some drilling going on.
Oh, sorry. It's an end-to-end process that really has to be looked at in terms of what the planning commission does, what our development review services does, and look at whether there are efficiencies, whether there are redundancies, whether there are things that the planning commission should not be doing, that they're currently doing, before you start looking at fees. And so, that was the other reason why, when we had discussions where there was really, it really wasn't ready to be brought forward, not to mention the fact that we have just completed our own study on development review side, where we will probably be bringing back in the next bud, in the next budget cycle, a recommendation for some changes in fees on our side. You can't look at fees on the two sides independently. The same people pay them, it's part of a continuum, you have to look for efficiencies. So, I only offer that to say that I don't believe that just bringing back the existing study is going to get us to where we need to be. I think the other piece to it is what I just described, and so, if you want to incorporate that into your motion, that might be something to consider.
I'll incorporate it into motion, and then, let me ask a question of Ms. Ornita, I said 90 days, do I need to take that out?
Yeah, I think it would be good to have a little flexibility to see how long that piece takes us, as long as, I mean, we could keep the end game of the budget process.
Okay, so if, if you don't mind, I don't remember who seconded.
Commissioner Hagan.
If I can take the 90 days out-
Commissioner Hagan, you're okay?
And allow the staffs to continue to do the work that they're doing, and incorporate the language that Mr. Merrill put forth, and Commissioner Kemp, understand that we're not trying to kill this, we're just trying to do it in a better mechanism, a better procedure, that we can bring it forth in a budgetary process and meet the needs of what you, what you're requesting and getting it done that way. That's my motion.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with your comments, and Commissioner Kemp, we do appreciate your passion, and I think in the end, we're all gonna get to where you want to be.
Well-
Okay, I, you're, you've got a couple of people ahead of you, so let me take them first, and I'll come back to you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make my remarks brief. As was stated, our fees are below other counties, they have not been adjusted since 1987, so it's reasonable to suggest that an update should occur. Similar to Commissioner Merman and Ann Miller, my concerns involve process. Historically, when we've increased builder fees, we've involved the industry, stakeholders, the public on the front end. According to our summary, there were two meetings with six people, okay? That's not an exhaustive process. That occurred with the mobility fee issue. It should be coordinated throughout the budget process, planning commission board should make a recommendation. And the study itself relying on is two years old. That study itself might need to be updated. And that's before I, Mr. Merrill made his comments about lacking efficiencies and, and taking a broad macro view. Question I have, do we need to authorize that study to be updated as part of this? Or is that inherent in this, in this process?
Mr. Merrill, Ms.-
I believe that's part of the motion.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
That's why they took the 90 days out.
Okay. Well, I agree with the path suggested by Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Merman, and certainly, an update needs to occur, but I think it's important that we follow the process that we've historically followed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hagan Botham, you're recognized.
Thank you, and just a few comments, and I'll try and be brief. I want to first off, on behalf of this commissioner, apologize to the planning commission staff and the director and members of the planning commission for what I feel is criticism that this report didn't in fact sit in collect dust, that you were following a process. I'm concerned, as Commissioner Miller mentioned, the Dark Ages, I remember when there was bad relations, horrible, horrible relations with the planning commission and this board, and I want them to follow their process. I do not want to drive us back into an atmosphere of not being collaborative, not working together. So, I, again, with a heartfelt apology, just know that I take exception to the, to the criticism, and as far as this board avoiding the issue, there's a process we follow, and I think it's important, that's by no means, on my behalf, a matter of avoiding the, the issue. I think that everyone recognizes fees need to be updated, and members of the industry have not objected to that with other fee increases, and I doubt they're going to this time, but it would be disingenuous when we sit here as land use board members and we instruct a, an applicant to go to the back of the room or come back, you know, at another meeting, get with the neighborhood, or get with the stakeholders. It's important that you have the stakeholders' input, and to, to have it with a current plan and process. And I, as far as the workload, I recognize that it has increased, but I do recall that when land use meetings were held twice a month, and they, they didn't run all day, they ran well into the night. So, we're still not up to that workload prior to the recession, but we're getting there. And this commission and the leaders in the administration have recognized that, and will find a best path to working together in a respectful manner, and making sure that taxpayers are not bearing an undue burden, but also recognize that, close, that these fee increases are passed on to those very taxpayers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan Botham. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I, Ms. Ornita, I recognize, of course, that the planning commission's work is important in your work as well, and this was in no way, in fact, this was meant totally, to take this burden off the backs of taxpayers. Our working families should not be subsidizing what are shameful, appalling, appallingly low fees that are, so that forcing us, forcing our taxpayers, our working families to subsidize this process, that's, that's, that's just wrong. Our fees, again, have not been raised since the Berlin Wall was standing, since East Germany was a country. In 2016, this study was done. If, if this is how long the process takes, I don't know, you know, maybe it will be another decade before we do something with this, because we, I'm certainly glad to have set a little bit of fire under this process to try to get this moving and get us to seriously look at this and, and bring it back here. So, I will be pressing on this in the months to come, following it up, because I think this is- this is unconscionable, how they are charging $25,000 in Pasco and Manatee for the same thing we're charging $1,000 for. It's just not right. It's wrong, and we need to change that.
Yeah, I think nobody disputes some of those facts, obviously, but I do think there's a commitment here on this board to get this done in next year's budget process, absolutely, and get these fees. And I also want to tell you, we can't forget what the legislature did in 2011, which further exacerbated this whole issue by doing away with concurrency. We just, that killed us. We were coming out of the recession, we didn't, we still don't have all the money for, for all the infrastructure needs. So, you know, we can't forget, there are other responsible parties in this, not just us, the legislature. Commissioner Chris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Commissioner Kemp, as you're here longer, you will learn more about how the board operates and what its proper protocols and procedures. This is a complicated process, but it's important that we maintain relationships with our counterparts on the other boards and not go back to the infighting and the stalemates that we had in the past. We have a great relationship with our planning commission. You know, I have spent a great deal of time working with you and your staff on a lot of the projects in my district, and quite frankly, have gotten the kind of help that I couldn't have gotten anywhere else. I certainly want to make sure that we are charging fair and equitable fees, and I also want to make sure that our cost of doing business, where it may be different than other counties, is fairly taken into consideration. We can't just say what somebody else does is what we should do, because they may have different costs than we do. And they may have, we may have other offsets that they don't. You know, this is a bigger picture, and I think all factors have got to be taken into consideration. But out of respect to working with our counterparts, I think we're moving in the right direction. We do need to reassess these fees. We do need to make sure that we are charging a fair and equitable amount to cover our costs. And we must also keep in mind that, at the end of the day, whatever fees we do charge are going to get passed on to the home buyer. So, you know, we've also got to take that into consideration and how they will affect, you know, the home buyers and the sale of homes in our, in our county. And right now, we're enjoying, you know, high sales and low volumes, and that's important in keeping the workforce moving forward. We're enjoying, in Hillsborough County right now, one of the strongest economies in the, in our state, and one of the lowest unemployment rates. And a lot of this all figures into that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're in the queue again.
I'd just like to say that what we need to keep in mind is that we're pushing these costs onto our taxpayers at this time. Our taxpayers are subsidizing this, this cost that must be paid, and our costs aren't different or significantly different, I couldn't imagine, than Pasco County or Manatee County, right on our lines. And if they are, we need to really be, you know, I think it's a, it's, it's just not, it's just not really believable. Finally, I'd just like to say that the 2011 that the state legislature did, yes, they hurt us tremendously with concurrency, but we can't push this off on them. This has been three decades of this board's responsibility of pushing these fees to our hard-working families, instead of taking responsibility for that, so.
I don't think that's the comment I said, and I'll go back to the caption to say that. What I said was, they also play a huge part in the problem we have today. And yes, we can't forget that, but I did not say that.
They, they do play a huge part, and I would.
Okay, Commissioner White, I'm going to recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman. Although I can very much appreciate your comments on transportation concurrency, I just want to be clear for the record that we're not talking about fees that can be used for our transportation system, parks, libraries, that type of thing. We're talking about fees that support administrative processes as it relates to processing these applications, correct?
The, the fees that we collect go back into the general fund as revenue. They do not go directly into the planning commission budget.
Okay. So just to make sure that I understand the process that's going to play out here. Number one, we're going to look for efficiencies between development services and the planning commission. We could very well end up saving dollars by making sure that we don't have duplicative services occurring between the two sides, right? And if I understand the process correctly, we very well could see some or all of the fees increase at the end of the process. Is that, is that fair to say?
It's possible.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking for. Just for me, as Commissioner Merman has said, this is about process and how we move forward from here. So, so we've removed the, the 90-day requirement, if you will, from the motion. Tell me again, when we're likely to see something come back?
Well, we were planning on proposing actually a number of fee reviews and potential fee increases as part of the, the two-year budget, which will be starting in January, I guess. So this would be, these would just be another of a number of user fees that would be considered by the board. And one of the other considerations is, is that, you know, we are experiencing, here in Hillsborough, much more robust growth, and the quality of the growth is much better, greater than other communities. So setting of fees also has to look at the effect on the supply coming in if fees are too high. So we're going to be looking at all different facets of it. So you'll probably see something in January, February time, I would say.
Okay. Okay. Getting back to my initial statement, while I can appreciate that if these activities are being subsidized with general fund dollars, you know, if the fees go up, there's less pressure on the general fund. The point I was trying to make, though, just so that it's absolutely clear for the record, is that we're not talking about impact fees here.
Oh, no.
Got it.
These are development review, comprehensive plan reviews.
Fees that people pay.
Right.
I've got that. I just want to make sure it's clear for the record, for the viewing audience.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just have one more question of Ms. Ornita. I understand that after this 2016 study was done and, you know, it doesn't, it seems like not much was done to move it forward, but I know at the planning, we talk about looking again at efficiencies and this. Can you describe, because you had described earlier, but I just, for the record, in 2017, there was a lot of work already done in looking at those elements of efficiencies and, and the work of the planning commission. Isn't that correct?
Yes, they, it was an internal look at our processes inside the planning commission, which I do think is distinct from what Mr. Merrill spoke about, looking at how our work interrelates with development services, particularly on things like the review of rezonings. We focused on the plan amendment process, because that's something that we manage.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see any other speakers in the queue. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Does anybody feel like the motion needs to be restated?
Please.
Okay.
Do you have a caption of the motion over there?
I can't, I have a lot to do. I'm going to go to the part here, sir.
How long would that take?
A few minutes.
Because I can't remember everything that was put into the motion, so I'm going to need you to do that, because Mr. Merrill asked some information.
Well, I mean, we all heard the motion. Can we have that exact motion distributed to the members, maybe after the meeting's over or something like that?
I'm going to read the meeting, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan, to approve Commissioner Miller's motion for F.2. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And Mr. Merrill, I guess we'll go into the regular agenda.
Yes, that concludes your time, certain. So we'll go to B.1, which is the county attorney's item relating to the county housing finance authority.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Mary Helen Ferris with the county attorney's office. This is a proposal by the Housing Finance Authority for their single-family plan of financing required by the IRS to go through a Tefra hearing, which was done. There's no county funds involved, and it's for low-interest mortgages for eligible and come first-time home buyers. Because the conventional market rates have been low, it's not feasible to do a bond issue. So what the housing authority, finance authority has been doing is using the money for mortgage credit certificates, which gives the home buyer a $2,000 credit, not deduction, a credit on their taxes, which effectively lowers the interest rate. So that's the program that we're doing going forward. I would like to say on the record that the Housing Finance Authority and the county's Department of Housing has been in partnership for several years to provide down payment assistance, and this has been a very good program. Cheryl Howell is here, if you would like to get some information on that.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good morning. Cheryl Howell, affordable housing director. And over the past year, we have created access to over 130 families through the first-time home buyers program in conjunction with the Housing Finance Authority. So it's a really good program, really good process.
Okay, thank you for your explanations. For item B.1, board action. Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan Botham. There are any further discussions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Economic Development, B.2.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jaksa Petrovich, Economic Development Department. On September 13, 2018, this Juarez family revocable trust submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate a parcel located west of intersection of Hoover Boulevard and West Knox Street, Tampa, Florida. 33634 is a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 19.14 acres and is shown on the projected map. Florida statutes require public announcement of the community meeting and two public hearings to designate a brownfield. The proposed community meeting is set to be on October 25, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. at AP Lito High School, located at 4409 West Sly Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33614. The two proposed public hearings are set to be on November 8, 2018, and December 5, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. during the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting in the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' boardroom on the second floor of the Frederick B. Carl County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. The staff recommendation is to authorize setting the community meetings and two public hearings as proposed. The staff is also requesting a waiver of the statutory requirement that one of the public hearings be held after 5:00 p.m. The advertised community meeting will be held at 6:00 p.m., and the B.O.C.C. will be provided with full transcripts of the public comment at the community meeting. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, and for the explanation, and we will need five votes for this item to pass, because it's a supermajority, because we're changing the time of the public hearing. So do we have board action? Motion by Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White to approve item B.2. There are any further discussions? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
The next items are the human resources, which are the annual performance appraisals for myself. Christine Beck is county attorney, and Peggy Kaski is county internal auditor.
Good morning. Beverly Waldron, HR Director. Before I start on the performance reviews, I would like to remind everyone of our invitation to join us across the street at 2:00 for Think Pink in the Park and take part of our human ribbon. B.3 is to complete the annual performance review for county administrator Mike Merrill. There is no financial impact at this time. The county administrator completed his performance review, a self-evaluation, which was shared with the board. The board members completed their individual evaluations. HR compiled that information and shared the summary with you, which you have for consideration today.
Okay, and do we need to approve this, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No, I just, we'll bring this up because it comes up every year. In his contract, it says that he gets the adjustment to his pay based on the average?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this year's average is what?
The average is 3%. We have not done the performance reviews for the other county employees as of yet. If you take no action with respect to pay on any of these reviews, the same methodology will be used as used for all employees under the county administrator, and those raises will be effective the beginning of January. The board can also elect to do otherwise.
Okay. We've done this in previous years where, and I wasn't chair, but I would like to make sure that he gets the 4%. It's up to 4%, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that is the, what exactly do you call that?
That's the maximum that's allowed in our merit.
In the merit pay. So I would like somebody to make a motion to accept the performance appraisal, but also have it go to 4%. So we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Hagan, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Uh, Mike, Mike, I need to comment.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to accept Mr. Merrill's appraisal and give the 4% merit pay, which is the maximum. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. I appreciate your support, and of course, I'm only as successful as the rest of the organization, and so I really, you know, have to acknowledge the work of my executive team and directors and every, every employee that has really worked hard to transform this organization and make it customer-focused and high-performance. And so I thank you, and I thank everyone in the organization.
Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Are you buying dinner tonight?
Yes, I am, for everyone, apparently.
It'll probably be at a health food store.
That's right. If you like tofu.
Yeah, no, fried chicken. Okay, B.4.
B.4.
Oh, we voted on that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's five to zero. Okay, thank you.
Complete the annual performance appraisal process for Christine Beck, county attorney. There's no financial impact at this time. Again, the same process was followed, and you have the summary result.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
White.
I think Ms. Beck is doing an outstanding job representing this board. I certainly think that, that it's warranted to give her the 4% raise as well. I, I think it's also important for the board at some point to be thinking about whether or not it's time to, you know, make her the, the permanent county attorney versus the, the interim or the acting county attorney, but.
When is that anniversary date, do you know?
The anniversary date, her contract?
I didn't, I thought we made her permanent.
No, you made her county attorney with a one-year contract, which expires on May 22, 2019.
So why don't you just include in your motion?
What's the, what's the standard contract length for, for the board's direct hires?
Most of them tend to be two to three years.
I'm going to.
Chip Fletcher had three years.
Correct, and the county administrators has been extended through the end of his drop.
What's the, I, I understand Mr. Merrill's in drop, so that throws, that probably throws his off-cycle, but what's the normal cycle for these?
Right now, the last series were approved in 2016. The internal auditor's contract is set to expire September 2019.
And, and Ms. Beck's is set to expire?
May 22, 2019.
I, I'm going to make a motion that, that, that we designate Ms. I'm gonna make a motion that, that, that we designate Ms. Beck as the county attorney, that we extend her contract through September 2019, just to put it on the same cycle as Ms. Caski's, and that we give her a 4% pay raise this year.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner White. Do I have a second? Okay, Commissioner Miller, and Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Well, Commissioner White, I agree with you concerning Ms. Caski, and you extended her contract through September 2019. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm going to amend your motion to extend that contract through September 2020.
I'll accept the, second.
Okay, so we have now, we're on the amendment to the motion to extend her contract to September 28 of 2020, okay? And we do have a second by Commissioner Miller. No, Miller and then White. Okay, sorry. Is there any further discussion on that, Commissioner White?
And just for the record, the other pieces of that motion were to establish the permanency of her position and the 4% pay raise for this year.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote. On the amendment, yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And we're now back to the motion as amended, which basically accepts the performance appraisal and with the 4% and whatever else is in the amendment. Is that correct?
It extends her contract through 9/28/2020.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioners, thank you very much for your support. I'm very grateful, and I want to thank my staff and the administration for helping me do this job, and we couldn't do it certainly without the great professionals we have up on the 27th floor, so thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. Yes, Commissioner Miller, I'm sorry, your name didn't come up.
Can you buy us dinner, some fried chicken and steak, instead of that stuff that Mr. Merrill wants to buy us? Tofu, tofu, hummus, so next?
I think you have some hungry Commissioners, getting close to lunchtime.
Actually, I think there's some here that prefer red meat, like steak or something, but anyway, okay, good.
Item B5, complete the annual performance appraisal process for Peggy Casky, county internal auditor. No financial impact at this time. Again, the same process was followed.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
How long is her contract?
Her contract was, the first modification, or the most recent modification, was done November 2, 2016, and her contract expires 9/21/2019.
I make a motion that we accept the...
Performance appraisal.
The performance appraisal, and that we extend her contract to September 2020 with the 4%
Second.
Raise, whatever they call it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White, to accept performance appraisal for Peggy Casky. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Miller?
When some of us came on this board, our internal auditor issues were off the chain, and they were running about us every day about the problems we were having with our internal auditor. We brought Ms. Casky on board, and we don't hear a peep out of anyone from the news because of the fact that her and her staff are doing an outstanding job. So I just want to tell you, thank you for what you do, congratulations on this, and continue to keep us out of the paper, especially from Daniel Ruth, okay?
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion on the floor, and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote. On B5.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Thank you again. Thank you, Beverly. So we go to management and budget, B6, and B7, and B8.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Management and Budget Department. Item B6 is asking you to approve a resolution, and this resolution approves for tax purposes the issuance of senior living revenue bonds by the Capital Trust Agency. The principal amount of the bonds can be up to $19.335 million, and the purpose is to finance or refinance a senior living facility known as Brookdale Brandon. The resolution also provides that based on the recommendation of the county's financial advisor for certain finance, that certain financial conditions be met before the bonds can be issued. The agenda item also requests a waiver of certain requirements of the board's policy concerning conduit, private activity bond issuance with respect to the bonds, and finally, the county does, will not have any, and it's not anticipated to have any financial obligation to either repay or guarantee repayment of the bonds.
Okay, thank you for that explanation of item B6. Board action? Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Chris to approve item B6. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Commissioners, item B7 is asking you to approve the recommendation of the committee and to approve agreements for organizations under the capital asset preservation program of the county. Those organizations would be the Tampa Performing Arts Center, Florida Aquarium, in the amount of $487,500, and also Lowry Park Zoo and the Tampa Theater, in the amount of $325,000 each. The funds will be used to promote economic development within Hillsborough County through preserving community capital assets and enhancing tourism, arts, culture, entertainment, and community education.
Thank you, Tom, for that explanation of B7. This is a great program. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by...
Second.
Commissioner Chris. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And Commissioner, item B8 is asking to approve a fiscal year 18 budget amendment resolution to increase the community investment tax revenue and expenditure appropriations by $4,531,150, and the 9 cent fuel tax and revenue expenditure and appropriations by $260,000 to reflect actual projected collections for fiscal year 18. This is an action that's necessary for the county to be able to meet its obligations under certain internal local agreements with the school board and with the, and the local municipalities. It's an item that we bring to usually once a year. Because of state law that only allows us to budget 95% of anticipated revenues, we have to bring this item to you so that we can facilitate the payments to these other organizations. The item is also asking to approve a budget amendment for fiscal year 18 related to the tax collector commissions of $10,000 for collections under the tourist development tax that also exceeded expectations.
Okay, thank you, Tom, for that explanation. On item B8, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B8. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Tom. Procurement Services, B9 and B10.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B9 is asking the board to award a two-year contract to the only bidder, DFW Rotek Incorporated, in the amount of $1,181,788.16 for ongoing and as-needed purchases of meter boxes, lids, which are used to protect the residential water meters throughout the county. In this case, there were no certified disadvantaged business enterprises and no registered small business enterprises for the components of the specified boxes. Therefore, no participation goal or set aside was established. Procurement Services does recommend approval.
Thank you. We're on item B9. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B9. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Item B10 is asking the board to award and execute an eight-month agreement with the lowest response responsible bidder, The Lane Construction Corporation, in the amount of $17,839,703.30 for roadway service, resurfacing, reclamation, and pavement recycling projects throughout the county for the Public Works Department. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 4% was established, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving a higher goal of 8%. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Okay, thank you very much. We're on item B10. Board action? A motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B10. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Scott. Public Utilities, B11.
Good afternoon. Almost... Yes, it is. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Connie Kessino with Public Utilities. This is a minor correction item to move budgeted dollars, grant dollars that we received from FDEP that were originally placed in the governmental grant fund, and it was actually a Water Enterprise Fund grant received. Does not impact the budget for the project at all, and it did not affect the timing of the project. It's merely an accounting correction. Therefore, staff request the board approve two adjustments. Actually, one for the year just ended, FY18, moving $2.5 million from the general governmental interfund, or intergovernmental grant fund to the Water Enterprise Fund, and then in FY19, because the project actually extended into the coming year.
You've given a great explanation. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham, trying to save some airtime here, and is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote on item B11.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B12, Public Works.
Good morning, John Lyons. Commissioners, this is to ask you to approve a budget amendment resolution to appropriate $1.437 million from the Department of Veterans Affairs into a project grant fund for the signal up at Bruce B. Downs and Richard Silverway.
Good, good explanation. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham to approve item B12, and believe me, this is a much-needed item. I've heard about it for too long. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B13, Real Estate Facilities.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fast, Assistant County Administrator. I'm here today to present item B13. At the September 6 board meeting, you directed staff to work with the community and developer to determine if there was an Upper Tampa Bay Trail alignment that would be mutually beneficial to the community, the county, and the developer. Working with the developer, we believe we have an option, which is option three on the attached exhibits to the agenda item that is worth consideration and input by the community. We intend to conduct a public meeting October 22 and return to the board with the results of the public comments at the November 8 board meeting. This agenda item is requesting authorization to proceed as I've described. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tom, and we are on item B13. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, as, as you all know, I have been very opposed to any movement of the trail at all. I like to put up, I'd like to ask staff to put up the policies of our comprehensive plan. This was not part of this agenda item when it came before us the first time, but I'd like to make everybody aware of this because we don't have a process where we look at this before we proceed with something like a selling or swapping or a damaging in an intense way of our very wonderful jewel of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail. Again, 300,000 people a year use that trail, and again, it's a number-one park amenity in Hillsborough County, very, very valued. We had a petition in days that was signed by 1,200 people. We had more than 100 emails in here within 24 hours asking us not to do this, and more than 210 comments in about it, 206 of them saying, please don't consider even thinking about this. But I want to go over these policies here. Policy 1.8 from our comp plan, recreation and park sites shall be held inviolate against diversion to other uses except in instances of overriding public interest, in which case they will be effectively replaced. And I would say for sure that there's no overriding public interest in this. This is simply to accommodate a developer for an apartment building to build parking and take the apartment building, put it on the trail, and cut down the trees in the most shaded, wonderful area of the trail. Second is policy 3.12. The county, in cooperation with the state, regional, and local entities, shall ensure that no actions, no actions will be taken which will impair the use of designated recreational trails. I'd say we are very, very much have, are, should not be even considering, thinking about moving forward on looking at moving the trail. I think it's really incumbent, I know we talked about the three options, the third of which will be brought there, and I will be up at that public meeting, but I think that there is a, the very important option that we have here is that we don't sell the trail, that the trail's kept exactly where it is, that the public understands that, and the developer works around the trail and does what they should do and just put their, figure out how to build their property on the property that they have, figure out how to do their development on the property they have rather than the other way around. I do not think the county in any way should be signing over its rights to rezoning. In terms of that, I know that this won't come back to us until it's looked at, it looks like it's being placed on our agenda on November 8, and I have, I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned that this is a precedent-setting action. I do not believe that we have ever moved a trail that we have taken so hard and worked so hard to get and keep, and it would set a precedent that would be a terrible precedent for this county if we ever agreed to do anything like that. But I notice that the issue is currently set to come back to this board, November 8. That date is significant because the voters will have elected a new board two days earlier. However, the board will not be sworn in until November 20. Under these circumstances, I don't believe it makes sense to proceed with this on November 8, and so I'm asking that we move this issue and not bring it back until the December 5 meeting.
Okay, we have people lined up in the queue for comments. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my motion at the September 6 board meeting was pretty clear. It states to direct staff to work with the community and the developer on conditions for a business plan to see if a win-win can be achieved. Additional public hearings as part of that, and just determine if a win-win can occur. If it can, great. If it can't, that's fine, too. I'm already on record stating that I oppose realigning the trail. However, it makes sense to talk to the applicant in order to potentially gain much-needed public amenities. I see in the backup, they've already agreed to respend amenities, to dedicating parcels. I actually had a request from an email, it might have been sent to all the board members, asking for the developer to build a walkway over Gun Highway. So I think if you're at the negotiating table, you have an opportunity to gain much-needed, much-needed amenities. I think it's important to pull, to point out that the rezoning has been, has been pulled, so there's nothing in front of us for that. Should the applicant decide to move forward, there'll be ample additional opportunities for public input in addition to the public hearings that I, that was part of my motion. So quite candidly, other than allowing Commissioner Kemp another opportunity to grandstand, I'm unclear as to why this is even in front of us today.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Higginbotham, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I would just like to say that in moving this to December would specifically exclude, exclude me from participating with my vote. I value the time that my staff and I put into researching this, and would just respectfully ask the other board members not to support that if that's going to be included in the motion or that we move that because I think it'd be unfair to the voters here in Hillsborough County to exclude a commissioner who spent time following this issue and participating in this issue. So I'd just like to say, let's keep it in November.
Okay, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Kemp, you did make a motion, didn't you? Okay, apologize. Allergy medicine kicking in. Is there a second for her motion? So her motion actually dies for lack of a second. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Well, I do think it's important that the new board moves, that this is a chance for us to put it to the new board in December. I appreciate Commissioner Higginbotham's concerns, but I do think it's... but I do think that we can move that out. I'm pleased to hear that Commissioner Hagan has now taken a stand against a realignment of the trail. That's good. It'd be great to hear others. But I don't even think that this should be on the table for consideration. I'll say it again, and I've said it so that I think it's really important for this to go forward or for the public to hear this, and I put it on the agenda so the public would be updated. No, because many people felt blindsided, including me as a commissioner, felt blindsided by the first time that this came before this commission with very little information, for me also. And so I want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to be on top of this, that I myself have an opportunity to know what's going on, and that we move along. But I also want the public to know at this public hearing, or at this hearing that we have at the trail, that to me, the option is, the option is for the developer to figure out how to develop on the land that they have, rather than realign the trail.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
I just want to state for the record that I would have ordinarily seconded that motion, but Commissioner Higginbotham, I had no idea that you had put so much work into this. And, you know, it was, so, yeah, that, you know, hearing that, you know, meant a lot to me, and I certainly want you to be a part of this, of this vote and this action, so.
Okay, I don't see any other people in the queue. We are on item B13, and do we have a motion to approve item B13? Okay, motion by Commissioner Higginbotham. It's to continue working with the Citrus Park Community and Alliance Residential Company, the developer of a 20-acre apartment complex on Gunn Highway, and hold the public meeting on October 22. So we have a motion by Commissioner Higginbotham. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
No, as I said in my comments, this is unnecessary. It's already scheduled. We've already given direction, so if we want to do it again, I mean, is there really a need? Mr. Merrill, I guess I'll ask you, is there really a need to take action? I know it was placed on here, Commissioner Kemp requested it during future issues, but other than that, is there a specific need to take action?
There's not a specific need, but given the discussion, the controversy, I just felt like we needed reaffirmation that we should be continuing with the work that essentially, yes, you had instructed us to do. So, but no, it's not necessary.
So...
So I guess taking the direction has not changed.
Technically, I guess the motion's going to die for lack of a second.
Okay, so the direction hasn't changed. We'll continue to work and...
And that's fine, I can withdraw it, but I just felt staff was hesitant and wanted just reinforcement. But if we're continuing with the process, then let's just continue.
Yeah, and, you know, I have to say, too, I've been working really hard to get the last section of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail done and funded. And I know I got some money in the budget this year to do a new PD&E to get that last section done. So I'm, I'm pretty committed, and I agree with Commissioner Hagan that I think we need to just kind of move forward. Okay, no action on B13?
Item B14, Social Services.
Good afternoon, Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. Social Services is requesting approval of item B14 to accept a modification to the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program Agreement with the State of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, increasing the current agreement by $1,338,350 to assist approximately 2,000 additional units of service for the current period through March 2019. This item also is requesting approval for a budget amendment to realign $1,917,843 within the agreement grant budget to bring the budget in line with the actual grant award.
Okay, thank you for your explanation of item B14. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham for item B14. Seeing no further discussion, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Higginbotham, may I have your vote? Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Audrey. F1, Board Appointments.
We have one board today. It's the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee. Please choose one, Commissioner Marmen.
Choose one, number one.
Commissioner Crist.
Number one.
Commissioner White.
Number one.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Higginbotham. Who would be Rhonda Flowers.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion confirmed by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Kemp, okay? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And the last item is G1, Monthly Head Start Report.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Dr. Jenkins, Head Start Department Director. We actually began the new year, October 1. Tomorrow, we swear in and elect our new board. I will keep you updated. I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, as always. We have a motion to receive the report from Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Chris, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. Seven to zero. Carried seven to zero.
And any future discussion items?
Anybody have anything? No? No? Okay, is there any further business to come before us?
No.
Seeing none, we are adjourned.